Welcome to our regular council meeting, this Tuesday, January the 22nd, 3:00 PM. We'll have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Dawn Williams.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on Bossier City. Lord, we pray for those in our community who are sick or are hurting. We pray for our military, Lord, and for wisdom, for our nation, our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. Jesus' name, amen.
Please face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick reminder to silence your cellphones, please. Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Absent.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All right, and I want to approve the minutes of the January 8th, 2019 regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Irwin. Please cast your vote.
Hang on just a second.
Yeah.
There was an error on my part.
No.
Yes. Here we go. I apologize, Mr. Free, you can vote now.
Hey, how come you're not?
Thank you, Ms. Melrose.
Have your vote.
Nothing's showing up on me.
Hey, Phyllis?
Hit refresh.
Oh, refresh, alright, good. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, approve the agenda, we have an add-on?
We have one add-on, it will be number seventeen, under new business, introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of 6.280 acres of land at $60,000 an acre to Edco LLC and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith. First reading.
I had a question. I'll do some of...
Second.
Regarding the plat, it shows that Melrose Extension from Plantation to Marlena, and that has been taken out of funding from the bond issue, so do we need to correct that before we pass or add this, or is just that understanding that...
This is really just approval of the sale by the Greater Bossier Economic Development.
Yeah, I just didn't want something to be presented as if it, you know, going back in past history when that's happened sometimes bites us, but I won't, yep.
Did you say Plantation? Just want to make sure it's a correction, it's Melrose, right?
Yeah, there's, it's two phases, the first phase is from the Walmart to Plantation, and then that next phase has been taken out of funding for now, so I just didn't want there to be a misinterpretation that that was being built, that's all, by the purchaser of the land.
That's right.
So that's for the record.
Yes, sir.
All right, first by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams.
To add to the agenda.
To add to the agenda, yes, sir.
Correct. All right, cast your vote.
That's good. Just point of order, don't we have to do the audience thing, you know, the...
For the, to approve, to add on?
To add to the agenda.
Okay, I apologize, so would there be any comments from the audience on adding that to the agenda? All right. All right, now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Wait, we didn't finish that, I still have...
Ma'am?
I still have one that hasn't voted for the, for that first one.
That was Darby.
Oh.
You hadn't voted.
On the motion to add?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
There we go.
There we go, thank you.
I'll second that.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Councilman Montgomery, first, second by Councilman Williams, questions from the audience on the approved agenda. All right, council member, cast your vote.
Please silence your phones.
We are off to a rough start today. Can we do a do-over? Can I have a do-over?
Thanks everyone.
All right, committee reports, we have Mark Hudson, our city engineer, with his monthly project report. We have good news, don't we, Mark?
It's all good, council.
Shed Road.
There's about a half a dozen joints that have been sawed out and need to be repoured and replaced, there's maybe a third of the sidewalk on the north side needs to be poured, after that's done, they'll run a machine down the lanes to make sure they're smooth enough, they won't be, so we'll need to grind down the high spots a little bit, that's routine, and then we'll put the pavement markings down, that's what's left to go.
Watcher looks good.
It's taken a real long time, but we're getting a good job, so that's the good news there. The right hand, the left-hand turnpocket on Highway 71 at Sunflower Road, we met at the highway department just last week to strategize about beginning that. We got a good contractor, it turns out, the, one of the southbound lanes on Highway 71 in the vicinity of this project will be closed, it'll be necked down to one lane for probably about three weeks there. Coleman Street, I described to you the problem we're having encroaching onto the Fort Smith Park, we've got a new alignment, I instructed our designers just to shift the whole project down five feet, they did it, and it's gonna fit now, we're not gonna get on the Fort Smith Park, and that ought to help us avoid a lot of problems with the Federal Highway Administration.
Mark, I would suggest, maybe a week before that lane closes, to put a sign up that kind of notifies people, because people can come over Jimmy Davis and take the parkway and come around the back way to get to their neighborhoods, and it could avoid a lot of traffic congestion.
I'll mention that to the contractor.
That would be, I think that'd be helpful.
Viking Drive, our designers are just rocking along, Pam is going to quarterback the acquisition of the right-of-way, save us a ton of money, and she's preparing what is called a service plan for DOTD to approve, so she's been working on that. The US AD improvements face one of the Waltral Bigby Carriage Way, we're gonna open that up here in a couple of minutes, I think we got three bids, and can't wait to learn how much and who it is. Innovation Drive, we tweaked the plans a little bit, and that's done with Councilman Larkin's help with the levy board, that was re-approved by the levy board, and I've, we're getting those street dedication plaits sent back to the owners, so hopefully they can sign it right away, and we can commence with that project. Waltral Bigby Carriage Way, just rocking along with that too, I expect to have my plans delivered to me in April, you recall, I told you before they were gonna be delivered late last year, but they asked for more time, I gave it to them, you know, we've added shed road, a portion of shed road to that project, when we agreed to build the driveway underneath the bridge at the end of Citizens Bank Drive, they had to redesign part of the bridge, there's been some unexpected delays working with the Corps, so I didn't see any harm in, you know, giving them to April. Our projects at the arena are working real well, we're having design and specifications done now to provide for a new roof this summer, parking lot rehab's going well, we need about three more weeks of good weather to finish the parking lot, and I just signed an agreement last week to have the air conditioning chillers rebuilt. Councilman Harvey asked that I report on the connection between Kroger and Walmart, we got $65,000 budgeted for that this year, I'm having the common property line surveyed between the two stores, and some additional surveying done to determine the exact footprint of the driveways and what right-of-ways we might need from the two stores. Thank you. The Melrose Extension that Councilman Montgomery was just talking about, we've got a proposed alignment for that, I've delivered that to the landowner, Haynesville Mercantile, I expect to hear from them this week, I expect for them to tell me it looks good, and we'll commence with the design of that project, it won't take very long. And lastly, our new parking lots downtown, big weather delays with that, but we're finally making some progress, you know, we're adding 178 parking spaces, and we've poured about 25% of the concrete to date, there was another big pour scheduled for tomorrow, but I'm sure it'll be rained out, and if you guys got any questions or comments?
I had one question, is the tying together of Walmart and Kroger something that is in general well-accepted by both merchants, or are they involved, or...
They, they will be, but they're not generally, they're, at different times, they've had different issues, but there's not a general agreement, so we need the documents to go to them and, and suggest to them that they should be in agreement, and if not, we'll invoke some appropriation powers, but we have to do some more engineering analysis beyond just the presentation, but we don't even have anything to really present to them now, I mean, we, you know, the fence, and one other one we're gonna have to check with is Haynesville Mercantile, to make sure that that wasn't part of the sale to Walmart, at one time they had that fence up to stop trash from blowing out of the parking lot, but when we first started, Walmart went against it, then, then they were for it, and Kroger was against it, so it'll take some effort.
Is the, and I can look at details later, but just one last question, is, is the concept in general to join the two parking lots, or is it just to have two or three lanes of exchange in the two properties?
There's a, there's a patch of ground, maybe 30 feet, between the back of curb of each parking lot, but if you look at a, if you look at an aerial view, it's obvious where two driveways connecting the two parking lots will fit in real well, so that's what it is.
Who owns the, the undeveloped ground between the two?
I'm assuming the property line's approximately where the fence is, so, you know, each store owns a little piece of each, I envision a couple of street right-of-ways to build these driveways in, that they can dedicate to the city, we'll own them and maintain them, they'll be built such that we don't have any maintenance to worry about, but...
Right, well, it's a good idea, I'm glad to hear it's underway.
Thanks, council.
All right, next will be Stacy Fernandez, Finance Director, with her monthly finance report.
Good afternoon, council, I've distributed the financial reports for December 2018, and they pretty much are the same as they've run the majority of the year, we've got 110% revenue by fund, with 103 being the sales tax portion of the general fund. On page two are expenses by fund, and we're at 95%. On page three are the sales taxes, you look at the second section, year-to-date, 18 is 49.6 million, year-to-date, 17 was 46.7, for favorable, 2.9 or 6.3% favorable. Next page is the Manning Report, and we have 667 employees compared to last month, 667, so there's no change, and we are 26 below budget. And finally, the last page is the Water and Sewer Financial Report, and month over month, we're at 179, year-to-date, we're at 106, to budget, we're at 137, and the rolling 12 months is the same as the year-to-date, 106. You have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to approve the mayor to execute an active donation to accept Lot 1000 of Victoria Meadows subdivision, unit number one, as per plat recorded in Book 1601, page 528 through 529 of the records of Bossier Parish, final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams, questions from the audience, questions from the council, all right, cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $14 million to come from the 2018 LCDA bond fund to be used to design, develop, and construct Tinsley Park baseball improvements, final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams, questions from the audience, questions from the council, cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $19,000 to come from the general fund, building, maintenance, and repairs to be used to replace a stove top vent hood for building located at 716 Bearcat Drive, final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Montgomery, questions from the audience, questions from the council, cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer sub-base and BC14 rehabilitation project for a total of $2,93,000 to come from the sewer contingency fund, final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin, questions from the audience, questions from the council, cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances, final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Montgomery, questions from the audience, questions from the council, cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P1901 US Highway 80 Improvements.
Council, the engineer's estimate for this job is $10,200,000, the budget is $10,700,000, it's being funded from the Waltral Bigby Carriage Way Fund, there was one addendum which answered questions, provided a list of attendees to the non-mandatory meeting, clarified documents included KCS railroad permit requirements. The first bid is from Best Jet Builders LLC, they acknowledge the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $10,991,072.92, that's 1-0-9-9-1-0-7-2.92. The second bid is from Dawn M. Baron Contractor, Inc., they acknowledge the addendum, the bid bond is included, it's for $12,397,738.24, that's 1-2-3-9-7-7-3-8.24. And the last bid is from JB James Construction LLC, the bid bond is included, they acknowledge the addendum, the bid is for $15,824,571, that's 1-5-8-2-4-5-7-1.00. Ash, did you accept the reading of these bids?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams, ask your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for repairs and improvements to the North Bossier Pump Station at a cost of $65,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency funds, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin, questions from the audience, questions from the council, cast your vote. I'm trying to get back to where I was, oh, God.
What'd you hear over there, Mr. Williams?
Get the first one over there.
Introduce an ordinance to declare certain mobile equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, through the second, Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance repealing the appropriation of a hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-two cents from the Police Department Operations Budget to compensate canine handlers for overtime from the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen general fund fund balance. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to come from the sales tax capital contingency fund to be used to pave part of the median on Haynesville Jones Road to enhance the truck handling radius. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the water treatment plant, ozone system improvement project for a total of two hundred and one thousand four hundred dollars to come from the water capital contingency fund. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Question, cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to extend the current moratorium on issuance of occupational licenses and certificates of occupancy for the placement and permanent operation of food trucks, trailers, and other similar food vendors on a single site for time periods of longer than one business day by invitation within the corporate limits of the city of Bossier City. First and final reading?
So moved.
Just a, council, just a quick status on this. My staff has been gathering information on various types of food vendors. It's not just trucks. There's also other types of mobile food vendors. They've been gathering information from all over the country on what cities are doing, how they regulate that, where they allow them, where they don't. Beginning next week, we'll start having meetings with various parts of the administration to see where we go with this. I foresee some zoning regulation changes, maybe some city policy or some city ordinance changes to make these work. Shouldn't, we should have something before y'all, before that this latest moratorium expires again.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Any more questions for Sam? All right, guys, cast your vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one, I'm sorry, of hiring of two police officers for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman.
Montgomery.
Montgomery.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one part-time animal control worker for the Public Works Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of a superintendent for the Environmental Affairs Division of the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions on this from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accounts clerk, too, for the Customer Service Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Second. Third.
First by Councilman Montgomery and a second by Councilman Montgomery. Second by Councilman Larkin. Question from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the Big Airline Landscaping Project for an increase of two thousand fifty dollars. Total cost of contract with change order of forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve the appointment of Bill Ultimus to the Caddo Bossier Port Commission for a six-year term. Effective date is February seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, and will expire February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yes, I just wanted to make a point of thanking Mr. Steve Watkins for his, I believe it's twenty years of service. Back before the port was really going, and he certainly had a very positive impact, not only for Bossier City and Bossier Parish, but for the port as well. So, Mr. Watkins, thank you for your service.
And if I may, I sent a letter to Mr. Watkins essentially saying the same thing, documenting what you just said.
But. All right. Additional comments? Cast your vote.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for life marked north Louisiana, January twenty-six, two thousand nineteen.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience on this item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to approve the use of Bossier City water and sewer services for a proposed dentist office to be located at fifty-two oh nine Airline Drive. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Stacy, I just wanted to make sure on this that we are still charging that impact fee, right? Okay.
Any additional questions? All right, cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of six point two eight zero acres of land, sixty thousand dollars an acre, to Edco LLC, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith. First reading?
Moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience on this item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right. Any announcements from the council?
Yes, sir. Lost my train of thought. Give me a second. I like, as everyone knows, I like to go back in history, in this being the council and the administration and so forth. And when Tim and I were elected in two thousand and one, and the mayor was the chief administrative officer, there was a commitment made by the council as well as the administration, and the mayor has carried that torch when he was elected in two thousand and five. But we promised the taxpayers and the citizens of Bossier that we would construct a roadway that would be railroad intersection-free. And today, eighteen years later from two thousand and one, we have let the first bid to complete that roadway that we all committed to eighteen years ago. So, I want to thank everyone. It's been a long road and a lot of hard work by the administration as well as the council pushing forward, because as we all know, in our political, what's it called, when you get the feeling of the people? Can somebody help me? What's that term? Huh?
Consensus?
When you do a poll, you find out what is, what is it that makes people mad, or what are they concerned with most of all? And seventy-something percent of the people in these polls always say traffic. So, for the record, and the fact that we're on TV today, that we want to let everyone know that it may have taken a while, but that commitment is now being put into real concrete, and it will be completed. So, anyway, I wanted to make that note and thank everyone for all their hard work and diligence.
This stuff was done in the next eighteen years, huh, before I die?
All right, any other announcements, mayor?
Just say we may be adding another one in the summer of, 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 Shed Road. It's gotta be right up there with completing the seventh section of Shed Road. Been going on for about thirty-some odd years.
Well said.
All right, any additional announcements? Getting adjourned.